Welcome, everybody, to the Bellevue City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, December 6, 2022, at 6:00 PM. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would stand for that, followed by the invocation by Pastor Richard Nakai from the Bellevue Christian Center at Fort Carvel Drive.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we just thank you today for all of the givings that you have brought in this room, God, for the diverse opinions and backgrounds that you've brought to this room, God. We also thank you, God, for giving us the leadership and the wisdom necessary.
To make all the decisions this morning or this evening. God, we ask that you would just cover this place, that you would bless the discussion to be had and all the decisions need to be made. We thank you for being with us tonight, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Nakai. I'll call the meeting to order. Susan, would you take a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilman Casey.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman McCaw.
Here.
Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilman Burns.
Here.
And Councilwoman Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item five, approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Casey. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
Councilman Cook. Well, they finally came through. All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And item six, do I have a motion to adjourn, signed I? Councilman Burns?
I move we adjourn, signed I.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Cook. Any discussion? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And then at this time, item number seven on your agenda is administering the oath of office for elected Bellevue City Council members and mayor by the Honorable Judge S. Colin Palm. So we will start with the council members. So if you would join the judge up in front of the podium. Yep. And Kelly, if you want to come forward, you can come stand by your hubby.
You can stand by me.
All right. Good evening. You can all raise your right hands and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Kathy Welch.
On the sixth day of December, 2022.
On the sixth day of December, 2022.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
And without mental reservation.
And without mental reservation.
Or for purpose of evasion.
Or for purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of the office of city council member.
Perform the duties of the office of city council member.
For the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska.
For the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska.
According to the law and to the best of my ability.
According to the law and to the best of my ability.
And I do further swear that I do not advocate.
And I do further swear that I do not advocate.
Nor am I a member of any political party or organization that advocates. The overthrow of the government of the United States.
The overthrow of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
And that during such time that.
And that during such time.
As I am in this position.
As I am in this position.
I will not advocate.
I will not advocate.
Nor become a member of any political party or organization that advocates.
Nor become a member of any political party or organization that advocates.
The overthrow of the government of the United States.
The overthrow of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Now for mayor.
Mr. Mayor, you ready?
The only person that gets allowed to do that.
All right. If you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Rusty Hike.
I, Rusty Hike.
On the sixth day of December, 2022.
On the sixth day of December, 2022.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely and without mental reservation.
That I take this obligation freely and without mental reservation.
Or for purpose of evasion.
Or for purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of the office of mayor.
Perform the duties of the office of mayor.
For the city of Bellevue.
For the city of Bellevue.
Sarpy County, Nebraska.
Sarpy County, Nebraska.
According to the law and to the best of my ability.
According to the law and to the best of my ability.
And I do further swear that I do not advocate.
And I do further swear that I do not advocate.
Nor am I a member of any political party or organization that advocates.
Nor am I a member of any political party or organization that advocates.
The overthrow of the government of the United States.
The overthrow of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
And that during such time as I am in this position.
And that during such time that I am in this position.
I will not advocate.
I will not advocate.
Nor become a member of any political party or organization that advocates.
Nor become a member of any party or organization that advocates.
The overthrow of the government of the United States.
The overthrow of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you, everyone. Now I think we're... Do you want to take a little break here?
Yes.
Okay. So we're going to take like a little 10-minute recession here to have some... What?
You said recession.
Oh, yeah, recession. Take a little intermission here for 10 minutes to have some cupcakes and water. So we'll get back to it within 10 minutes. No recession.
We'll have to charge for the cupcakes.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Congratulations, everyone, and let's get on to four more years of business. So I'll call the meeting back to order again. We're at the Bellevue City Council meeting Tuesday, December sixth, two thousand twenty-two. We took a little recess and we will reconvene here at six twenty-three. Susan, would you take the roll call, please?
Councilman Casey.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman McCaw.
Here.
Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilwoman Burns.
Here.
And Councilwoman Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
And a reminder, this meeting is conducted in accordance with Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item ten, approval of agenda consent agenda claims and advisory committee reports ten A, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna make a motion that I'd like to make an amendment. I'll make a motion we approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch.
Then I'd like to make an amendment and move item twenty-one I to right behind twelve A. They both deal with fast wire.
Okay, who has a second?
I'll second that.
So, motion by Cook, second by Welch, to amend the agenda to move item twenty-one I to right after item twelve on the agenda? Any comments or questions on that? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Now I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended by Councilman Cook and seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item ten B, approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda? Councilman Burns?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by McCaw. Any discussion, questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And then item twelve, special presentations, twelve A is a presentation from Fast Wire Broadband. And we moved item twenty-one I up to this location as well, so please state your name and address.
Yes, Jim Patterson. I, our office is on Main Street in Blair, Nebraska. We're, Fast Wire Broadband is, has a rich history, formerly known as American Broadband. Prior to that, we were the Huntel Telephone Company. Prior to that, we were the Blair Telephone Company. So, we've been in business in the state of Nebraska for a hundred and twenty years. We are predominantly, and I'll take you through this, we are predominantly, we operate in five states. We operate in Nebraska, Missouri, Louisiana, Texas, and Alaska. And not the areas of Alaska that you would know, not the names that trip off the tongue. So, we, we have about twenty thousand homes passed that we serve in Alaska, all, I think, remote. I think it's beyond rural, I think you have remote. We serve predominantly rural communities, so, and we serve half of those communities that we serve today are already fiber to the home. So, we were fiber to rural communities before that was cool. We're here tonight for the purpose of obtaining our cable TV license. So, we're also a cable TV provider in about three quarters of the areas where we are also the phone provider or the broadband provider today. So, we're the, for example, we're the cable TV provider in Blair, we're the cable TV provider in Arlington and Keller and Kenard, excuse me, and in Tacoma. So, Fort Calhoun. So, we, we operate in, as both, you know, we kind of bring both a cable orientation to the business, as well as a tradition of being a telephone provider. We still have some copper, but not a lot left. And predominantly, what we're doing now is, is deploying fiber throughout not only our existing communities, but also into new communities. We're in the process of deploying eighty thousand homes passed this year, so in the next twelve months. That'll increase the size of the company significantly. So, the company before we started our fiber deployments was approximately, call it fifty thousand homes passed, with about nineteen thousand of those being in Nebraska. The company after we complete this will be over a hundred and thirty thousand homes passed, with about fifty thousand of those homes passed being in Nebraska. And when I say homes passed, I don't just mean residences, I mean, but if I say structures passed, you'll go, what does that mean? Right? So, it's homes and businesses that are passed. Our, our perspective, our kind of philosophy around building is very similar to our traditions as a, as a local phone company. We believe in building out entire communities. We don't redline. We're not a business-only, business-only company. We're everything, right? We try to serve every need of every, every community, every community need in the market. Kind of make sure I've covered all the other segments. We're privately owned. We're owned by a private equity firm in, well-known private equity firm based out of Chicago called Madison Dearborn Partners. They are, you know, very large private equity firm. And they purchased American Broadband in, in twenty twenty-one during the middle of COVID. And have, we've recently raised a three hundred and seventy-five million dollar round of financing, so we're well-capitalized. We got in before things got a little tough to, to raise money. So, we're, all of that has been done. We've had a very busy year and a half since, since the new management came in. So, that's a little bit about the company and kind of what we do. We do a little bit of everything, is a nice way of thinking about it. But we're, we're experienced in both fiber to the home, and obviously, we serve a lot of businesses in the areas that we, that we operate. We're experienced in deploying new markets and being a competitor to incumbents. We do that in Louisiana, we're doing that now in Missouri, we'll be doing that here in Nebraska. And we provide, we obviously have a rich history in providing phone services, but we also have a history in providing high-speed internet, broadband services, as well as cable TV, traditional video services. Any questions on the company? Take it to the next. Here are the communities that we serve in Nebraska today. Predominantly, again, the, the legacy names were Blair Telephone, Northeast, Nebraska Telephone, and Rock County Telephone. So, it's, I can be your geography phonophriend. First, for portions of Alaska and Texas, of areas, I'd like to say we serve both Nome, Alaska, and Nome, Texas. So, there's only a third, only one other Nome, and that's in South Dakota. We don't serve that yet. So, we're, we're experienced in both, you know, deploying buried and aerial. Obviously, as being a cable company, we have to do both aerial. What we're, what we're doing right now in Blair is deploying buried, buried services. Our product set, as I said before, we've, as we deploy, and we're not prepared to announce all our pricing and all our products today in front of the free world before we actually get the, you know, tell our customers. But we're, we'll be deploying symmetrical speed, high-speed internet, probably topping out at a gig symmetric. More than that, probably two gigs for businesses. We'll be deploying, obviously, phone and video services. So, again, our purpose for, one of our requests tonight is to obtain a, a video franchise from the city. We do a variety, a variety of structures for enterprises and businesses. Shane, who's with us here, he's, he works on all sorts of fun stuff, whether it's a cell tower, or a hospital, or a apartment complex, you know, whatever it is. We've, we've, we've seen it all, and we, we do it all today, many times in, you know, some very unusual places. So, we also are very proud to serve many military bases. We're adding three to our list, and our eighty thousand deployment will be deployed at Fort Polk in Leesville, Louisiana, Whiteman Air Force Base in, in Warrensburg, Knob Noster technically, and, and then here for Offutt. We, we have folks here from our construction partner EX2, Bill and Troy are here. We'll, I think we'll kind of have some discussion on construction practices later, but we've, we've set up numbers to call. We're doing door hangers. We're talking about ways that we can improve the process to be able to make that better. But again, for the, for the purposes of kind of the, this particular agenda item, I think we're just looking for approval to be able to offer video services. Any questions?
So, I guess on the, on the video services, the wires that you've already put in the ground, you go back and add more wire? Is there content?
It's all done through our fiber network. So, it, think of it, we'll, we'll offer technically two products. Shane, keep me honest if I missed any of this. One will look exactly like a set-top box that you would receive from a cable provider today, except it's not going over a traditional coaxial. It'll go over our fiber to be able to do it. So, it's a, and then the second piece is through, say, Apple TV, or through Roku, or whatever, we'll have an app. And you, you would treat it just like any other app you would, you would watch through those services. So, it's, and we're doing that, again, across the, each of the eighty thousand that we're building out. So, we've set up a pretty, pretty large network with a lot of big circuits homing into encoders that, and, and lots of, lots of servers. So, we'll keep the guys here at Farnham pretty busy with a lot of server, more servers in the area.
Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Patterson, just so I understand, and I understand what the vote is for, but are you offering internet, telephone, television to the consumers in Bellevue, or help me understand what you're offering?
Consumers and businesses.
So, once this, if, if you're offering that now, already?
No, no, we will, we will complete our first phase of the, so, we're building out thirty-four thousand homes and businesses past. Our first phase will end very, very soon. It'll be just over, or just under a third of those. So, we're kind of rolling it out in, in, in three phases, all, more or less about ten thousand homes passed each.
Okay, and you are headquartered in Blair, is that correct?
Blair and also in Carless, Louisiana.
Okay.
So, Sulfur, Louisiana.
And I understand your history, you know, the, the longevity that you had. What's, what's the benefit that you offer to the consumers over any other company, as, for an example?
Well, we are, we're very local, so we're very, very much a Nebraska, you know, based firm. Of all the people that you see here, all Nebraska-based, all of our local account teams are Nebraska-based. Most, but not all of our service will, will have, we obviously have customer service representatives in Nebraska, but we're leveraging, because we have Alaska and we'll, we'll soon have Alabama, we can kind of leverage a few more time zones to be able to extend our hours and our expertise a little bit more, rather than handing it off to a third party. So, but our, our customer service is exceptional, it's very good. Our, if you construct a network that is solid and rock-solid and installed correctly and engineered correctly, you tend to have less issues to have to deal with. You still have cuts, you still have all sorts of things that happen. But relative to a copper network where, you know, distance matters and, and just the, the issues you could have with copper, which again, is part of a coaxial network, you can, you can run into some issues. So, we, we like this because it's very simple, it's well-engineered, buried, so it has, has a lot of things going for it.
Okay, perfect. It's nice that we're able to give our consumers some choices.
Kathy, I know you, we had a earlier conversation, just so you know, we're fully committed to the affordable, or, excuse me, the affordable plans, right? So, we've, we've always been along, in Blair, for example, about six, seven percent of our base is on ACP. And, and we, you know, we advocate that, we promote that, we qualify folks for ACP, very committed to affordability. But we also have a lot, lots of folks who take our gig services, too.
What is ECP?
Affordable Care Plan, is that what it is? I don't know what the P is, but it's, it's, it's the FCC's replacement for what was called EPBB, which was the plan during COVID. It's a thirty dollar a month credit.
Perfect.
For those who qualify, usually it's food stamps, or free school lunch, other, other programs like that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I got a few questions, and I have talked to a couple people with you today, and so it's gonna just be repeating that. I think a lot of people, we videotape these meetings live.
Yeah, sure.
People can be watching us now. We put them on YouTube, put them on our website. I mean, a lot of people get to see it. And so, a lot of these, I think we've probably somewhat have addressed and, and are good, but I think it's just where people want to hear it, people want to have that assurance. I know that when it started, I, I, I don't know, I think you're in Northwest Bellevue and Southwest Bellevue right now, maybe working. And.
Shane, yeah, okay.
And I think when it started, I had a few complaints. I got ahold of Mr. Risto and Mr. Clark, and they said everything's good. And it got quiet, and I think what happens is when you jump into a new neighborhood, you know, I think that's where people are wondering. And some of the things that I've been hearing is, you know, and I, I drive, I live out there where you're at now. I mean, you're not, you're, you're getting real close to my neighborhood. And part of the concern, I think, is the communication on, I know that for a while I was seeing multiple signs, like in a block. You'd have four or five signs in different yards, and I don't know if that's still present today. And I took a phone call today, and I drove by the house, and I, I didn't even see a sign stuck in anybody's yard, and it's stuff like that. Now, I only went up to her house, turned around and came back, but I drove a good city block, block and a half. And I think what, what needs to happen is, we're getting the phone calls, and you probably are, too.
We, we do. We get, Bill gets a lot of phone calls every day, yes.
I'm asking if we can maybe communicate a little bit better with people. I know that the signs that you put in yards, it just says "Fast Wire," and I think it's, so is a website address. And I, I, I hate to say it this way, but people, I'm, I think they don't know what the next step is.
Right.
And the next step is usually someone local versus fast wire.
Exactly.
And, and stuff. So, I would ask if maybe there would be some type of improvement on communication. I've gone through neighborhoods where, my neighborhood has markings and streets, but there's been no signs, no door knockers or door hangers, what you call them. So, I think people, even though we sit here and we vote, not a lot of people watch what is really going on in their city, and then they see someone in their front yard, and then the phone rings. So, I would ask for a better communication. I know one of the gentlemen said, we're thinking about sending letters.
So, what should happen is when you spray, right, when you're, when you're getting ready to do locates and, and just doing the, just doing the markings, you should have both, you should have a door hanger put at the same time, so that gives the customer adequate notice. We, we need to do a better job of making sure that interval is held, and Bill and I talked about that here today, correct? So, we'll work through that. Councilman Cook, we'll make sure that that is addressed. What we were also thinking about is to kind of tag-team that, right? Because a lot of times we were putting that out during, let's just say, they were getting lots of door hangers potentially from politicians or others who wanted their vote, and just saw another purple door hanger and said, or purple and green, blue door hanger and said, that's, it's, I don't need to read that, right? And that, and so we, so our thought is to put a letter in the mailbox and a door hanger pre-construction, so they get both together. And we'd be open to any ideas as to how, how to, how to make that letter most, most effective.
No, I, I like what you're saying. I, I think people want it easy for them. I even think the yard signs, if they even had a phone number on them. Because I, I'm not saying you have to do it, I think a letter's a great idea. I'm just saying, these people need to see something, open something, look at something and say, okay, hey, who do I need to talk to? I got a question. I, I think that would be helpful. I think it's the unknown. My, my, my street is marked up.
Until you get there and all of a sudden somebody's, let's just say, tearing up your front yard, right? Or you're somewhere.
I had two good, long, long, long phone calls today and, and a couple emails. So, I, I'm just, communication, I think, is something that we need to work on. And I would just ask, it sounds like you're, you're addressing it, and I'm happy with what.
We will, and we'll come back and, you know, update you, and certainly, if we're getting, continuing to get calls and we're not addressing it, we'll, we'll do whatever we gotta do to make sure that works.
Appreciate it. Another thing is, the pedestals, I, I, people, I mean, and social media, and, and that's, they don't understand what's going on. I, I've driven the neighborhoods, and it appears to me a pedestal, and I, I looked at a couple that were two, about two foot some, I think were a little bit taller, from talking to a couple gentlemen here, seems like that's then feeds off to six, seven, eight homes. So, that pedestal's not in every yard. Can you sort of explain that?
If you wanna. Shane, why don't you come up so they can?
Mr. Patterson, would you make sure you sign the, sign in for the record?
I did, I signed in already.
Thank you.
My name's Shane Morrison. I live in Blair, Nebraska. I've been with the company ten years. So, and what he said, what you said, what you assumed is, is accurate. So, typically, there's gonna be a larger, what we call vaults. Those are buried, usually have a lid that's surface level on them. They're fairly large at times, depending on the nature of the build. But that's where everything comes into the neighborhood and passes through the neighborhood to make the entire fiber get to where it's going. The pedestals that stick above ground, they're, you know, knee-high to thigh-high usually, typically. And those will feed six to eight homes. Typically, we try to keep them about six homes. So, it's not gonna be in every yard, but it's gonna be every, you know, few homes. You're gonna have a pedestal, it'll feed that home, and then the, either across the street or up the street. It just kind of depends on how the design build and the economics of that design work.
And all of this is in the front yard, front right away?
Typically, yeah. I mean, it, it kind of depends on the neighborhood. You know, some neighborhoods, it's, 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 it's at the end, sometimes it's, you know, by the alley. Sometimes you need to go down the front of the street. It, it, it becomes a, you know, kind of a design slash business decision about where you place that and how you place it, because you're trying to be as efficient as, as possible. Because at the end of the day, we're, you know, we're running a business, we're trying to be cost-conscious with our builds, so that the customers can not have to pay higher prices. We can be very competitive in the market and give them the, you know, the most affordable prices we can afford. So, at the end of the day, that's really what it's about. And I don't know if you've noticed, but this business has become very cutthroat, especially, you know, at the lower end, in those, those, those entry-level tiers, you know? It's become very, very competitive at that level. To be competitive at that level, you've got to be very cost-conscious on your builds. So, if you go through the rear, behind all the homes, it's very easy to run into a lot of fences and a lot of landscaping that becomes very expensive to fix and replace, and all that does is drive up the cost of your build. So, you know, you have to make some of those decisions, and some of those decisions you can't always get somebody on the ground to look at beforehand. Sometimes you have to make a decision based on, on a satellite image. So, those things all play into, play into the fact of how you design it and where things end up.
And then typically, that power source would probably be on one side of the street that would have the ground-level box and the pedestal.
Typically, yes.
Typically, and then, so if you went down the street, and I, this was what I did, I was counting about every five or six homes. It was pretty much a straight street, pretty standard. It seemed like a, a box here would probably service a couple houses this way.
And usually across the street.
And then the next box, which might be five houses away, comes back this way, a couple houses, and goes the other way.
That is correct. That's, that's typically how it's done. And sometimes, you know, based on how the la, the, the lay of the land is, you have to cross the street and go the other side, because there's a big falloff as you go up this road. So, it just, all that's very dependent on, on, you know, how that's, how, how the, how the land is laid there.
Another thing that people are asking me, on sprinkler systems, some people have low-voltage lighting, fences, other damage. You, you, you guys are responsible, and you would, obviously, if, if, if there's anything happening, you're gonna put everything back to normal. Part of the concern was, well, I, you know, they put in my cable today, and, you know, May, I turn on my sprinkler system and I got a leak. Who am I gonna call? Who's gonna come out and fix it?
Yeah, I mean, that's, again, making sure we get that number out there, making sure they know who to call, but that would be us. We would fix that. Anything, any damage we, we make, we fix, which is why we try to be cost-conscious as how you build it, you know? Fact of the matter is, it's easier to fix a Brooklyn sprinkler line than it is to tear down a fence and put a fence back up, because you got to build the back. So, those kinds of things make it, you know, make. Because you got to build the back. So those kinds of things make it, you know, make a determination on where you build and how you build. And how you try to be as cost conscious as possible. So you can be, you know, affordable in the market.
Most, most yards, you're gonna see wire come up, but if they don't have that pedestal or the flat thing, those wires are gonna be connected and buried. They won't have anything in their yard.
Depends.
Okay.
That depends. Um, he, he can answer that better than I can. I, I, and, and just to be fair, I'm, I'm, I'm the network guy. I'm a, I'm born and raised in IT. I've worked, you know, at a desk.
And I, and I, the reason I ask that is people.
But I've helped with design, so I understand why they're doing.
People thinks that everybody's gonna get this pedestal or gonna get this flat box in their yard. And I, and I'm trying to tell them, I don't think that's the case.
It's not.
And then they're saying, well, why, everybody's yard's getting this, you know, where you're taking the cable here, you're dipping it up. You're taking the cable and going over there. They're thinking that where that hole is in my yard, I'm gonna have a box or something. Is that true?
Mr. Morrison, would you sign that?
I'm sorry.
Sorry. I will sign.
Thank you.
Step away.
Hi, my name's Bill Thomas. I work for EX2, the company that engineer and design the project. Uh, born and raised in Omaha. Uh, the purpose of the pedestals is um, there's splice trays inside of them that have to be protected from weather, mud, water and such. So each pedestal that feeds those homes, usually about eight, there will be a solid wire from that pedestal going underground through the conduits. Solid through those small, little green lidded, what we call flower pots. And then all the way to the home. There's not a break or a splice in that wire from the pad to the home. So some of the wires can be three hundred feet long, some of them sixty feet. That's how the system works, if that answers your question.
Well, is everybody gonna have a pedestal?
No, there is usually one or two pedestals per block.
Okay.
On an average size block.
And then, if, if, if you're in my yard today and I say, you know, I, I, I'm not gonna swap my service yet. What, what, is, is anything brought up to my house at that time?
No, nothing will be brought up to the house unless, unless you ask for it.
But six months later, if I say, I want your service, you guys are knocking it out, I want your service. You come back, hook everything up free of charge, except my monthly service for the product you're gonna provide.
That is, Shane again, that's correct.
Okay. It might not be six months, might be, you know, down the road, but I'm saying is.
Hopefully initially.
Okay, I, I, I hear you.
Okay, so in case a homeowner asks you, so the infrastructure is in place. To the flower pot that's in front of your property, you're on the parcel line between you and your neighbor. If you order the service, then another contractor will come in with a small plow machine. And they're gonna cut a little trench about maybe twelve inches deep from that point to the house.
Okay.
To get that fiber all the way connected, so.
And then you'll add the box and bring it into the house?
Yes.
And the box will be on the front of the house or you're gonna go around the house or to the side of the house?
The box, I think, will sit on your TV.
Well, no, how you gonna, how you gonna get in my house? Front side, backside, on the side of the house?
So, so where, where that box that's on the side of the house gets placed is a discussion between the contractor and the homeowner at the time of install.
Beside a house would be likely the place to go.
Some people want it around the back, some people want it on the side. And it's usually a discussion about, okay, what makes the best sense and where can we fit it and where does it work and, you know? Sometimes they want it all the way around the back and backside, but there's, you know, all this landscaping in the way and it becomes a, you know, a negotiated. Well, we can put it right here.
Okay.
And, and, and the, and the units that we're gonna be using, I don't think are very big. Yeah, cuz those are, we're, yeah, we're gonna be using typically internal O N T devices. So there's not electronics on the side of the house, so it doesn't need to be as big. So we can use a smaller unit on the side of the house. So those typically tend to go over better with homeowners.
Um, I don't know if it'd be beneficial, you were talking about maybe sending me a diagram to sort of explain how a line goes down and goes. I don't know if, and I would ask maybe our city administrator, I don't know if we have anything on our website that you could provide to us or else if I clicked on your website. Is it easy for me to click on your website and say, okay, they're working in Bellevue and, but here's Bellevue, click on that. I see where they're at, they're coming my way, I know how to contact someone, I know how to communicate?
We, we don't have anything that's public consumption at this point for that. But that's something we can definitely take back and discuss internally.
Well, I'm just, I'm just thinking the.
It's a good idea.
We could put out, we're gonna, but I, I think you've answered these questions very appropriately and I want competition. Um, I'm glad. I, I wish we would have had people coming in, underground years ago.
And, and, and just, just to kind of, you know, kind of put a cap on it. Um, cuz it sounds like you don't really have any more questions, but just put a cap on it. Um, you know, the guys that are working out there, you know, they get approached, they get asked questions. Um, and by far the feedback that they're getting is, the majority of what we hear is, oh, awesome, great to hear it, when can you hook me up? So, you know, most of the feedback we get is positive. Obviously, the, the negative, we don't wanna ignore that. We wanna deal with that, we wanna make sure we address it and, and handle it appropriately. Um, but again, I think the majority of it has been a very, very positive response, so.
And, and one of the comments you made.
To your point, I think everybody's ready for competition.
Yeah. And there's more of it coming in Bellevue. Um, but one of the comment, comments that you made um, earlier answered a question, the cable you're putting in will do all that you wanna do?
Yes, yes. So, so not to get too long-winded and if I get too long-winded, you can tell me, shut up. Anyway, um, from a, from a technical perspective, everything that you receive in your home, whether it's voice, video, or the internet, obviously, has all moved to a data pipe. So it's all IP-based, internet traffic-based. So it's not all publicly moving across the internet. Most of it's private when you start talking about video and um, phone calls. That's generally private IP ranges and IP internet traffic. But it's all data now. So we can put one connection into the home. And we just use a box in the home to split out, okay, this piece of data goes for video and this piece goes for internet and this piece goes for voice. So it's just one data pipe that goes into the home.
I, I wanna thank you and I would ask that, would you please, the communication, I think, is the link here. People understanding what's going on. And I think that's gotta be with, you know, a week or two out before you get in the neighborhood that people maybe get the door knocker or the door hanger or something shoved in the mailbox, however.
I'll have uh, Bill sign the thing too.
So I would just add, also the city would be willing, if um, you're, if you know you're moving into a certain neighborhood or a certain part of town. We can push that out on our public access tele, television as well, the cable channel.
That's a good idea.
Um, and if you have a telephone number or something, we'd be glad to push that out to you and.
Yeah, let's do that.
Social media sites will.
Let's do that.
Public Works be contacted or?
Yeah, we have, we have Jim's contacting. It's great. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Casey?
Just like to ask a couple of questions before you get comfortable and sit down. Uh, do you continue installing throughout the winter and the dead winter and the grounds frozen?
Generally, go ahead, Bill.
Yes, we do. It'll slow down, of course, when the ground freezes and makes things a little bit more difficult and they have to be a little more careful. But yes, it's planned to go year round.
If, if I'm a homeowner and I don't want a pedestal in my yard, as I drove around and looked at where you're currently at, uh, it looks like you're putting him kind of on the boundary line between two homes. Is, if, but if I don't want one of those, do I have an option of saying, sorry, I don't want one of those or it is what it is?
All of the structure is to be placed in the public right of way. So. Hopefully I can just talk you into letting us put it there. We can have a nice conversation, maybe.
Okay. Uh, one last question. Um, I, most of, everything is done by boring, right? You're not actually digging a trench in front of the homes, correct?
Most everything is done by boring, correct? Um, there is potholing, of course, to dig up and expose existing utilities so that they're not damaged in the process, so there's quite a lot of digging.
Some of the areas that I witnessed today looked like uh, there was some, obviously, grass torn up and it looked like straw had been put down on top of it. Uh, obviously, grass isn't gonna grow this time of year, but will you come back in the spring in those areas and make sure they're, they're as good as they were when you started?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Cook?
I just, I just forgot what.
Councilman McCaw?
Mr. Patterson, I think you mentioned earlier an app. If I get an app for the service, do I still get a, do I still get a service to the house?
Um, as the app is just for video. So think of it as if you had Hulu Live or YouTube TV, this would be an app called Fastwire.
Okay.
And it, it would be your, you know, your TV channels.
Okay, so I'd still have a service in a box at the home?
Absolutely. It ha, you, you would need one. You would need one. We won't sell you the app standalone. We're not, we're not, this is a part of our data. We'd have to have the data product in order to get the video product.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure. It seems that I've sold like a satellite dish these days. Uh, you know, they don't necessarily have a dish anymore all the time. You know, I might be making this up too.
Correct, correct. No, no, you're right. So DirecTV Stream, right? Is, you don't need a satellite connection to run DirecTV Stream. So this, but this is, this is an app that we would sell in conjunction with our video service, which we would sell in conjunction with our fiber service.
Okay. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just wanna make a comment. I think it was last Thursday or Friday evening, I stopped by some of the crews that were working and I was very impressed. Um, I went and talked to one of them and I, I wanted to ask them some questions, but I knew that wasn't probably the appropriate person. They were kind enough to get someone on the phone for me. That person then gave me another name and phone number, which is fine.
Yeah.
Um, I did not call it because then I talked to Mr. Risto, our city administrator, and he said, Paul, they're on the agenda. So uh, uh, but I wanted to pass along, I probably talked to, there was probably three or four trucks. It wa, it was getting dark, which, you know, five, five thirty, we're getting dark. But I thought the way they were set up, the lights for visibility, the guys working, uh, I, I had a.
Fluorescent vests?
Yeah, some vests on. I, I thought it was very professionally and well-done. And they were very kind and very polite when I went up. I mean, they don't know who I am. I did introduce myself as a council member, but, you know, anybody can do that. But I just, I, I just wanna tell you, I, I would agree. I think they're being pretty good. Just the contact that I had with them, I think they're being pretty good with people confronting them and trying to get some answers. Now, they probably don't have the answers. They'll probably get, probably get one of these gentlemen in the room, probably need to talk to them and, and, and that would have happened for me. But I just wanted to pass along, the guys were great, they were super. And I thought they, the way they were set up was very appropriate, very safety cautious uh, minded. And I thought it was a pretty good operation that I saw going on.
We, we want them to be very happy in their, in their construction. Cuz, you know, they're working really hard to try to get this up uh, in a, in a timely manner.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you for the presentation and.
Thank you.
Stick around cuz they're gonna have one more round at this in a second.
Okay.
So we're gonna go to twenty-one I. Which is approve and authorize the mayor to sign the franchise agreement with Fastwire Broadband for cable service. And I'll take a motion. Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I wanna make a motion that we approve item twenty-one I, second.
So we got a motion by Welch, second by Burns. Are there any further questions, discussion? All right, please vote.
Do you just wanna vote ver, verbally?
I will vote yes.
Okay. All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your integrity and your willingness to work on the issues.
Appreciate you.
Yeah, they'll take us to uh, thirteen organizational matters, thirteen B. Election of the City Council President for two thousand twenty-two. Uh, motion is needed to vote by a secret ballot. Do we want a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to elect Paul Cook as the president of our city council.
I will second that.
So we have a motion by uh, Councilwoman Welch, second by Councilman Casey. To nominate Paul Cook. Do we have any other nominations? Okay. So the motion by Councilwoman Welch is to uh, elect Paul Cook as council president and um, seconded by Casey. So if there's no questions, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item fourteen. Congratulations again. Paul, and thank you. Uh, I, I'll, I'll just mention, Councilman Cook's been an excellent president. He's uh, very responsive, asked all the questions and he's very thorough and I appreciate that. Um, takes a lot off my plate too, so. Uh, item fourteen, approved citizen communication. Uh, we have none this evening. Item fifteen, liquor licenses, fifteen A, recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission. The application for KENSeth Hospitality Company doing business as Courtyard Marriott and Conference Center. At thirty-seven thirty Rayner Parkway, Bellevue, an extension of their current liquor license to include their outdoor patio. And I will open fifteen A up for public hearing. If there's anyone wanting to speak regarding fifteen A, please come forward. Anyone wanting to speak? Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. And do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission. The application of Kenneth, KENSeth Hospitality Company doing business. Courtyard Marriott and Conference Center at thirty-seven thirty Rayner Parkway, Bellevue. An extension of their current liquor license to include their outdoor patio.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Casey. Are there any comments or questions? Please vote.
Is yours coming up? Councilman Cook?
Oh, man, it was this there. Can you send it back?
Okay.
I'll vote yes.
Okay. All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item fifteen B, recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission. The application for Infinity Hospitality, Inc., doing business as Hampton Inn Bellevue for class one, class I liquor license. At thirty-four oh four Sampson Way, Bellevue, to sell beer, wine and distilled spirits, on sale only. And John E. Klimpel as the manager. And I'll open up fifteen B for public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak regarding fifteen B? Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. And do I have a motion for fifteen B? Councilman Burns?
I move that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission. Application for Infinity Hospitality, Inc., doing business as Hampton Inn Bellevue for class I liquor license at thirty-four oh four Sampson Way, Bellevue. To sell beer, wine and distilled spirits, on sale only, and John E. Klimpel as manager.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions on fifteen B? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen, ordinances for adoption, third reading, sixteen A, ordinance number four one one one. An ordinance to redefine ward boundaries due to the two thousand twenty-two annexations. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one one one. An ordinance to amend section nine dash three of the Bellevue Municipal Code. To provide for revised city council ward boundaries. To repeal section nine dash three of the Bellevue Municipal Code as heretofore existing. And to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. Um, and do I have a motion for sixteen A? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number four-one-one-one. Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seventeen, ordinance for, ordinances for public hearing, second reading, seventeen A, ordinance number forty-one twelve. Request to annex miscellaneous rights of way applicant city of Bellevue. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four-one-one-two, an ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, certain landslots and real estate lying within the below described boundaries to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and designating an effective date.
Okay, I'll open seventeen A up for public hearing. Is there anyone here to re, speak regarding seventeen A? Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Uh, third reading will be December twentieth, two thousand twenty-two at six P M. Item seventeen B, ordinance number forty-one thirteen, amending the economic development program and authorize the mayor to sign. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four-one-one-three, an ordinance to amend article nine to chapter eleven of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the economic development program for the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. I'll open up, uh, seventeen B for public hearing. Is there anyone here wanting to speak regarding seventeen B? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Third reading will be December twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, six P M here in the council chambers. Item eighteen, ordinances for introduction, first reading, eighteen A, ordinance number forty-one fourteen and updated compensation ordinance to reflect the new minimum wage set in Nebraska by anticipated changes to state statute forty-eight dash one-two-zero-three per voter passage of Nebraska Initiative four thirty-three. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four-one-one-four, an ordinance of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, classifying the employees of the city fixing the ranges of compensation of such employees, providing a pay range schedule, providing for publication in pamphlet form repealing ordinance number forty-one-ten and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. That second reading and public hearing will be December twentieth, two thousand twenty-two at six P M. Item nineteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances, nineteen A, public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, consolidated annual performance and valuation report. And I will open up nineteen A for public hearing. Is there anyone wanting to speak? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Council, sorry. Do we need a?
Nope, that'll be on twenty.
Oh, it's the next one. Sorry. Uh, item twenty, resolutions. Uh, twenty A, resolution two thousand twenty-two dash thirty-seven, authorizing the submission of the consolidated annual performance and valuation report for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two Community Development Block Grant Program to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, authorize the mayor to sign. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, a quick comment. I just want to thank the CDBG committee. I looked at the stuff last night and we, we've, we are putting money in great programs. I'd like to make a motion that we approve resolution two thousand twenty-two dash thirty-seven.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Councilwoman Welch?
I think this is the point where we say what a great job Abby does for us and we're very honored to have her working with us continuing through these programs because of her leadership. This is the reason these programs are doing such a great job. So, thanks, Abby.
Thank you. Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Any comments, questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item twenty-one, current business, twenty-one C. Recommendation to approve purchase of two thousand twenty-two F-one-fifty crew cab pickup in an amount not to exceed sixty-four thousand one hundred and seventy dollars. Do I have a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve item twenty-one C.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item twenty-one D, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the amendment extending the Community Development Block Grant subrecipient agreement with Eastern Nebraska Community Action Partnership for the Food Pantry Relocation Assistance Project in the amount of two hundred and forty thousand eighty dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve and authorize the mayor to sign the amendment extending the Community Development Block Grant subrecipient agreement with Eastern Nebraska Community Action Partnership and cap for the Food Pantry Location Assistance Project in the amount of two hundred and forty thousand eighty dollars.
I'll second that.
Motion by Burns, second by Welch. Any discussion, comments, questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item twenty-one E, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the documents to release the Community Development Block Grant housing rehabilitation deed of trust for four oh five West Sarpy Avenue including the deed of reconvenance in an amount not to exceed twelve thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty cents. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve item twenty-one E.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by McCaw. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Twenty-one F, approve and accept the bid proposal from Creative Sites LLC for Normandy Hills Park Playground in an amount not to exceed forty-four thousand dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve item twenty-one F.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Casey. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Twenty-one G, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the OPPD project proposal and waiver for a new transformer service to South Lift Station renamed Brown River Lift Station in an amount not to exceed ninety-two thousand dollars. Motion? Councilman Burns?
I move, uh, that we approve and authorize the mayor to sign the OPP, um, yeah, the OPPD project proposal and waiver for a new transformer service to the, the South Lift Station renamed Brown Liver, Brown River Lift Station in an amount not to exceed ninety-two thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item twenty-one H, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the addendum to the original agreement with HDR for the Bellevue South Lift Station Phase Two renamed Brown River Lift Station Project in an amount not to exceed ten thousand seven hundred dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve twenty-one H.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Twenty-one J, approve the bid proposal from Sourcewell for Anderson Ford to purchase a F-three-fifty X L T sand truck and F-four-fifty mowing truck in an amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-six thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve item twenty-one J.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by McCaw. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Twenty-one K, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the memorandum of understanding regarding the grading and construction permits for the work within Sou- Southern Sarpy Watershed. Do I have a motion? Councilman Casey?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve item twenty-one K.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Cook. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item twenty-two is the administration reports. Comments must be limited to items on the current report. Uh, monthly report is given at the first council meeting of each month. November report is attached to council packets. Are there any questions on the current report? Councilman Burns?
Yeah, I just have a few questions for Jim, hold on, let me find out. Well, I lost. Okay, yeah, sorry, it's here. Uh, Jim, I just wanted to ask you a few questions, um, but the first one is the it says meant with appraiser team to discuss sale of city property. I just wanted to ask if you can maybe just talk about that a little bit and maybe what what portion of the city or, you know, I mean, what? I got, um, I just lost it again. Okay, it's, uh, one, two, three, four, fourth bullet point up from the bottom of yours.
My bullets might not align with yours, so.
No, it's okay. I had to find it. I was like, wait a second. I know it's on.
Yes, there is a piece of property off of Franklin. I'm sorry. There's a piece of property off of Franklin that basically has absolutely no public use for it. The owner that's adjacent to it wants to buy that property, so we have to get it appraised, uh, first. The appraisal on it's actually taking longer since they don't have any basis to make that appraisal. Normally, like, if you had, if I was gonna put a house on it, they could say that's the value of the property. But they're trying to come up with something that we will never let them allow any type of development on that property. He just wants to buy it to use it for his, his own enjoyment. We don't see any use for it, so we're just waiting on their appraisal.
That makes sense.
Yep.
Okay, cool. And then, um, I just wanted to ask, cause it said, uh, meeting with Mayor Hyke and I'm gonna Brent Truitt from Bird Scooter for potential pilot program in Bellevue. Can you talk about?
Yep. So Bird Scooter, they approached us last year. They've shared some of the other markets they're in. They've shared with us what their potential contract agreement would be with us. For us, it's trying to figure out where that would be applicable. So you put in these, they're like the electric bikes or the scooters and they put in the stations and wherever you're done, you just, they just leave them and then they come back and pick them up. So because of the way Bellevue's configured, it's where would be a good place. Cause we've seen a lot of success with the uh, program in Twin Creek with the bikes on, on the levee.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I think they told us that was one of their highest usage projects for that bike. So to put the scooters, which is a little bit different, it's like trying to find, like, the, the Old Town Development may be something that would be feasible. It's but if I take that scooter and I end up in a back neighborhood, how does that work out for them to pick it up? So we're just trying to work out the details, what's the best location. So we are exploring to see if we could put that in our city or not.
Okay. No, that makes sense. And that does, it looks like, and is it the same scooter company with like Omaha?
Yes.
Like those same thing? Yeah, it looks like those do get dumped just kinda on any street corner.
You'll see them just randomly laying around, but it's so, but they're responsible to pick them up, get them charged and it's all, you know, like an app-based fee, but it's like, where would we put that? How many we would, would we deploy? And are there more than one location? So we're just kind of in the infancy of looking at what we could do with that.
Okay.
So I haven't ruled it out or ruled it in, but I better understand it and where's the best place, so.
No, that makes sense. Cool. And then I just have a few other.
Hold on one second. On the Bird, the Birds B Y R D, so that's their brand, how they spell it. It's not B I R D, but, um, that is a great, uh, that is a great opportunity for like a young entrepreneur of anybody. Cause what they do is they find somebody in the area, they supply them with the, with the scooters.
Mm-hmm.
And then they're responsible for picking them up, tracking them, charging them, all that stuff. So they pay that individual, so it's if you know somebody that's
Interested.
Looking for something like that. Okay, sorry.
No, 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 that's interesting. I had no idea. So, uh, the only, I only have two other things I just wanted to ask. It says, um, here it says meeting with Ashley Decker to discuss job classifications. I just wanted to know if you could talk to us about that too and what that means.
Yep. One of them was just changing Tracy Nibier to, uh, facility maintenance manager was one. And then the others are to discuss what's happening with our our wage base for our part-time. So it's just looking at putting them in the, the right titles for the right jobs.
Okay.
It's nothing major, but, uh, I think Nibiers we approved last council for facility maintenance. And now we're looking at just adopting to the minimum wage requirements from the state and how do we go forward with that?
That makes sense. Okay. And then the last one, um, is the meeting with Councilman Cook and Chief Clary to discuss policy issue.
It was on our, um, captain's pay, whether it's comp, comp or overtime. So it was a discussion we had on how we're gonna set the policy for our SWAT commander. So it was kind of some dialogue going back and forth on how to move that forward.
Okay, so, um, is that anything that's like? Would that be covered in our, like, negotiations as far as contracts go and or is that the, is it completely separate or?
Could be completely separate. We'd operate outside of that.
Okay, okay. I was just curious. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I appreciate that.
Councilman Cook?
Uh, real quick, we got, uh, an email from our planning manager, Palm, about the Affordable Housing Action Plan. And could you sort of, oh, damn, she left. Maybe you know how that.
Mark.
Mark, how, how's that gonna progress? I think she said maybe next meeting?
Yep, they're gonna present it to planning first and then you guys will see it at the next council meeting probably. It's still in draft format, uh, but they're really close.
But are we talking that the next meeting, we'd vote on it? Okay.
I believe so. That's the plan unless, unless they run into a, unless they run into a snag.
Can we have a presentation?
Yep, that's part of the plan.
Okay, good. Thank you.
They will be here to present for you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Uh, there is no closed session, so I'll take a motion to adjourn. Councilman Cook?
I'll make a motion. We adjourn. I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch to adjourn. Please vote.
All vote.